It's seven oh one and like to call the October twenty ninth. Select board meeting for town of Georgetown to order. This thing is being recorded for our YouTube channel. I'm doing better at that. There any public comment? I don't see any, so I'm gonna turn it over to you.
All right. There were no items to be added to the agenda tonight. Were there any from the board? Seeing none, we do have a scheduled appointment at seven oh five P M. Tonight, a meeting with the town owned property management board regarding the working waterfront resiliency grant. The next item of business is the minutes of the October fifteenth meeting. I did send out a revised batch of them this afternoon. I appreciate the board members that sent me a few tweaks.
Most to approve.
Second, that's okay, second.
All right, everybody in favor?
And it is three to zero. Thank you so much. In your packet for review, Mary had provided September financials and September hauling numbers rather by email, not in your packet. Under assessing items, I would note that the state of Maine sales analysis return notice was received. This is the document that starts the process for next year of determining our certified ratio based on sales data from this year. And there's a song and dance we work through here at the office, but that will not be done until after commitment. And Bill Van Tynan will be working with us on that. I do also want to note that the mapping has been completed and is inbound in the mail. But Bill Van Tynan yesterday, when he and Pat Dow were in the office, were able to use digitized copies to do our splits. So we are still continuing in a good speed and clip for commitment. And we have two more minutes, so I'll quickly go through some of the correspondence. State of Maine had sent along the municipal resiliency grant agreement for the towns that we'll be talking about in a few minutes. They also sent along the municipal partnership for the resiliency grant agreement for the Georgetown co op. And we are working with the co op now on getting their paperwork in order to get their first reimbursement submitted as well as getting our first reimbursement for the town submitted. The state of Maine, I wanted to note for the board that the hazard mitigation officer for the state is leaving. The only reason this is particularly important to Georgetown is that Heather Dumey has been overseeing our Robin Hood Road Culver project. And we will actually move into a second hazard mitigation officer because we've got one more quarter before we can close out. The town of Georgetown volunteer fire department had sent Chief Waylon had sent along an email regarding ambulance backup, something that I believe he will be speaking to a little bit later in his board member update. We also received a letter from former town treasurer, Bill Webster regarding town governance. And I did share this with the board, but I would just highlight that he hopes that we can work to communicate with townspeople in a way that they can understand and influence the policies and town budget. And working to make sure really that more information is available and a lot more participation. I do know that Mr. Webster was in the audience here tonight. Should anybody have any questions or if they'd like to connect with him offline, they're welcome to do so as well. And I did want to let folks know because we periodically talk about C N P. Almost every other meeting now. I do have an update regarding old schoolhouse road pole two, which is connected to the tree in the cemetery. I have been told that the wire has now been removed and we're going to lay eyes on that pretty soon. And lastly, we were in receipt of a funding request from Spectrum Generations. And as is practice, we will send that off to the F A C. We've got a folder of them starting up. There was no other correspondence. Were there any questions on all of the things I brought up? And if not, we are right on the money at seven oh five for our scheduled appointment. Seeing no questions, I would invite the chair of the T O P and B Stephen Mace on up to the table. Though the owl will pick him up in the audience. And I just want to thank the T O P and B for being able to meet a special meeting tonight to discuss this. And just as a little bit of background, I did want to share that my understanding on the working waterfront resiliency grant, as had been other opinions here at the office, was that our matching fund contributions that we used as a part of the application would get us a check in the lump sum, which made thus a little bit different than the FEMA process. In finally connecting with the state and going through the municipal agreements, the program is more reimbursement based. So I believe the T O P and B tonight will be making a request of the board. Thank you, Stephen. Did I did I give you a good intro?
Right on. The T O P and B held a special meeting shortly before the select board meeting this evening. I am joined by Mark Donovan and Todd Barvey here as well. As many of you may know, Stan Burns has started work on the Doke property, which is there at Butters. To town and property down at the work. And several meetings ago, the town on property management board voted to. It's voted in our desire to contract with Stan. He has provided us with a quotation. It's approximately eighty three thousand dollars to complete the work for restoration of the South Shore. Stan also has been a participant in our meetings with FEMA, MIMA and various other agencies down at the work. So we have permits in place. Work has begun on the butter property. So the reason for our meeting tonight is that in Stan's quote, which we have not executed at this point. We need some startup money to to enable him to continue work around the South Shore without moving equipment or moving to another job. So the the proposal that he's given us asks for twenty seven thousand, seven hundred dollars in three installments approximately. So the town owned property management board this evening made a proposal and passed it unanimously to request up to thirty thousand dollars from the board of selectmen. As seed money, if you will, to keep the project going, knowing that there is some ARPA monies available. And some other general funds that may be available to help complete the work until the resiliency grants come in. Do I have that correct?
Yes.
Okay. Our only request, and this this will now put us over a hundred thousand dollars that we've taken out of the reserve fund. So we've hit the reserve pretty hard in this past year is that the board of selectmen wants monies are in. And grant money and reimbursement money is available that you give some serious consideration to replacing some of the monies that have been spent in the reserve fund. Because our feeling is it's one of the great town's greatest liabilities as well as one of the town's greatest assets. And right now we are, if this thirty thousand dollars is granted, it's going to put us around fifty thousand dollars in our reserve fund.
And I would just jump in a little bit, Stephen. Stephen, Mary and I met yesterday at the office. One of the concerns, so we have twenty four thousand and change in ARPA today that was approved and blessed at town meeting to be used as a part of the match for this project. So those monies are there. That is about three thousand dollars shy of that first installment. In talking with Stephen, who is very familiar with Stan's work, it's believed this project could go very quickly. And the state of Maine has told me it will take two to two and a half weeks, possibly three weeks for reimbursements to make it through their system. So really, if the select board was comfortable with this request, it would really be putting some seed money forward. If you went in the direction of thirty thousand dollars, if there was a number, it would in fact give us the money with ARPA and that to cover the two thirds. And I think we're very confident at the office that we'll have the reimbursements to close up after the fact. And you know, for what that's worth.
Bronwyn.
Thanks. Yeah, I do. Thanks, John. So what we're being asked to do is advance money from the the T O P and B reserve fund. Pending reimbursement from the FEMA grant. Is that correct?
From the state of Maine grant.
From this, from the state of, okay, from the MIMA grants then.
State of Maine.
The resiliency grant. Okay, there we got it right. Now, in other words, we advance this money. When we get the reimbursement, we replace the money into the reserve fund. That would be my approach to this. And I'm wondering if the amount that's being asked for is sufficient. Because what I hear Stephen saying is that once this guy gets started, it could move very quickly. So the twenty seven thousand is what he needs to get started. But maybe in two weeks, he'll need the next twenty seven thousand. And we still won't have reimbursement from the state at that point. So I I just want to make sure that we are authorizing a sufficient withdrawal from the reserve fund. And that we are indicating in our intention to replace it when the grant reimburses us.
Yeah, I believe that's it. You then you think you guys are Mary and
Yeah, yeah. And and really, Bronwyn, that was sort of the purpose or one of the purposes of my meeting with Tyler and Mary yesterday is, you know, that is, you know. Are we going to be able to pay our bills when the bills come due if the work moves too quickly? And they feel comfortable that the town will be able to meet its obligations. And again, you know, the town owned property management board isn't asking for a specific number in terms of replacing monies that have been spent in the warp reserve fund. We're just asking for consideration.
Well, in this instance, if we use money from the reserve fund. I would, my motion would be to replace that amount of money. If we're going to authorize a withdrawal of thirty thousand dollars for this particular expenditure, I would make it. I would make it part of the motion that we replace that. How much of the rest of the reserve fund is reinstated or replaced or replenished? As part of the budget process is another totally a different issue. But in this, I don't, you know, I just wanted to be clear that we're not taking this money out and not putting it back. We are loaning it to you out of your fund. It's essentially what we're talking about.
That sounds
Agreed. And and one thing I forgot to mention, John, is that I understand from the the warrant cycle. This isn't exactly a timeline because we're two weeks out from the next warrant. So part of our request would be that we hold a special warrant to be able to put this first installment in to keep the work going.
So what I think would make sense is if we could first to get a motion and voted on that, yes, we're going to do it. Then we could have a second motion to authorize the finance director, finance director to cut a check out of warrant, right? Is that the correct approach? And if your thought, Bronwyn, and I kind of share it is that we would like to not put a specific dollar amount in the motion. That way, if things do move quickly, I did prepare a motion here at the office that would be sufficient for that. I also have one with with language with a number ended at thirty. So I do think that it makes sense that we would definitely want to get our bills paid quickly, promptly and get the work done.
So do you want to let us hear the motion without a number?
If you want to read that, John.
I move that the town owned property management board be authorized to draw monies from the warf reserve fund to provide seed monies to be reimbursed for the working waterfront resiliency grant.
Does that sum up the key points you were looking at, Bronwyn?
Yes, as long as there's there that we authorize them to withdraw seed money, which will be reimbursed reimbursed from the grant and returned at that point, returned to the reserve fund.
Reimbursed and return to the reserve.
And if that's the motion, I'm happy to make it. And I'm happy to second it.
Okay. Everybody in favor? For all those in favor, three, zero.
Right on, thank you. Thank you. And would there be a second motion now to authorize Mary to cut a check off of the warrant cycle?
So moved. Second.
Is that language good or would you find?
Perfect. All in favor?
Perfect. Thank you, folks, and thank you.
Any other questions for either Todd, Mark or myself?
I want to thank you for your continuing work.
Well, we appreciate
It's been a lot of extra.
And for what it's worth, we are not meeting in the month of November. Because we we are on our sixth special meeting.
And the last thing I'd note, just to put everyone's mind at ease, our grant award was north of a hundred, it was a hundred and three thousand and change. The project is going to come in under that. So by the end of this, we will be able to make whole what we're taking out. So I just want to be abundantly clear that that's something we can get done.
All right, well, thank you very much.
Stephen, you're going to execute this document?
I'm I'm gonna
Keep signing it, leaving it with us?
Leave it right where it's at right now. That's all right with you.
Thank you.
Who's got a pen?
I got a pen. Bill's got a pen.
I got a pen.
All right. And so I would note that I believe our item of any appropriate action from a joint meeting with the T O P and B under new business has now been resolved. And I would go back to our agenda for continuing items. I would note that there were none for this agenda. However, on Monday, I received three certifies for main waste discharge license renewals, and those will be on our next agenda. So quiet this time, three in our next meeting. For committee updates, I'd note that we are now in possession of the town owned property management board minutes. And with that, there were no new membership items. And I would turn this over to the board for their liaison updates.
Well, we just pretty much went over my town on property management board just just then. And go there last meeting a week ago, right? No, yes, two weeks ago. I don't think I've had anything since our last meeting. What's that?
Cemetery.
Oh, cemetery. Sorry.
She's sorry.
We we met with the cemetery. No, I know we did. I couldn't remember what it was.
It's been a long day, John.
It's been a long week. Met with the cemetery committee up at the mountainside cemetery. John Woods been doing the lines and checking the back line, which is one that hasn't been actually figured. Well, it's been figured out a couple of different ways, but it's come up with a spot for new for pins to mark the back corners. Which a butt rusty white. And it's a it's a vague description on the other ones, but we're going by pins by previous surveyor, which John found and they're in the certain in the in the places where they were supposed to be from his thing. And Rusty's fine with those pins. So if we are in agreement, we're hoping to to get that new deed registered.
Yeah, Rusty, I think John is going to do an easement deed. Not, I'm sorry, a boundary adjustment with Rusty, right?
Yes.
The cemetery trustees and Rusty. And then the on the other side is a little bit of an issue.
Fence line. We've got a fence that's about fifty feet by about that much of it is off on the Butters property. And we're hoping to see whether we can just get an easement with the Butters. So we don't have to move anything. It's been there for as long as I can remember. I don't remember what it actually went up.
Well, it went up many years ago. I want to say it was the early two thousands. And at that, at that point, we knew we were close to the line, but we thought we were on the other side of it. And then in in John's work, they found this very old buried stake from Babbage from nineteen seventy three. I think it was something like that. So so nobody had seen this thing before, but they they happened to find this pin, which puts this, like John said, just air over the line. So so we're hoping that 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 Mike and Julie Shea will work with us on that side of it as well.
Any questions, you guys? Or is that a clear enough for you? I may be bouncing my head a little bit, so. I guess they're all set. And that that was the only big one that I had after all. Anything for you guys?
Aria gave you a thumbs up and I, Bronwyn, you are muted.
Yes, I am. Thank you. I haven't had any meetings. My committees have not met since our last meeting, but I want to remind everyone of the presentation from the sponsored by the Conservation Commission on the thirteenth of November about emergency store about storm preparedness. It should be a very interesting, I think it's the thirteenth. Yes, storm readiness at seven P M. On Wednesday, November thirteenth. There is a link to register for Zoom. And it'll be, there'll be a live Q and A, I believe, with the NOAA representative.
That's all I have, right? That's the historical society, right?
I don't think it's in, is it in person at all? I don't believe so. I don't know. Tyler?
Did we, Bronwyn, want to touch base on the transfer station attendant substitutes?
Yes. Before we get to, can I interrupt for a second? We just saw on the chat from Jess Weller, the Conservation Commission Chair, that it is just Zoom. So as Bronwyn said, that eleven thirteen meeting is just Zoom. And and I'm wondering if y'all have a flyer, Jess? If y'all could please send it along to all the outlets. You probably already have done that, but Tyler, could we post that to the to the town's website, please? The Facebook page to help advertise it, please?
I can definitely get it off to the Facebook page. I will look for that flyer. And Jess, if you could resend it to me if I haven't already received it, we'll get it up there. The website's a little bit tougher with getting pictures onto the homepage and all that jazz, but definitely Facebook at a minimum. And it is advertised on the town calendar that there's a Conservation Commission event. So there is word out there in some places.
Okay, so yes, Tyler, I should mention that I've met with well, following the the solid waste committee meeting where we discussed the possibility of creating a pool of quasi volunteer substitute attendants for the transfer station. Tyler and I met with Jim Coombs. And we come up with an application form and a set of criteria. There'll be a training requirement. And upon completion of that requirement and fill up filing other information. Volunteers will be eligible to be paid at the rate of sixteen dollars an hour when they're called to substitute. The idea being that we have regular attendants who are entitled to vacation time, sick time. And occasionally have emergency needs to be absent. And it's not feasible to have somebody in the wings that's a full time employee. And yet we need somebody who's qualified to do the work. We have a couple volunteers from the solid waste committee who plan to do the training and be certified. And we're hoping to recruit an additional undetermined number of physically able residents who would be willing to be on call for this for this activity. So that's basically where things stand. Either if you have questions, I'll try to answer them or Tyler can.
And now, and I can also get off tomorrow a copy of what we were thinking for the application to the full board. I think that Bronwyn and I finished meeting on that this week, so.
It's hot off the press. And therefore, the other thing is that that when you see it, please think about individuals that you might approach to join the crew. Jim is planning a half day in person training. And I don't know if that's if he's thinking of doing that one by one or as a group. I expect a group would be more efficient if we can get it together.
Okay, well, all right.
Any questions for Bronwyn? And if not, Aria, you were in the hot seat.
Okay, so the rec committee, their next meeting is on November fourth. It's a little off cycle because of the election. But they are working with the G C C to have Halloween once again at the so pizza for everyone down at the community center at five o'clock and then tromping in the square. You don't have to be a kid and you don't have to wear a costume, but highly encouraged. And then the school board meeting, the next school board meeting is November twentieth at five P M. On the back on the rec side, pickleball for all of y'all who have been waiting to move back inside. It's happening this weekend, ten o'clock on Sundays at the school gym. So thanks to the school for allowing us to use that gym again. And then I would just encourage everyone to get out and do your civic duty and vote if you haven't already by absentee on November fifth. Thanks to all the town office staff for always making that a smooth process for us. So thanks.
Thank you, Aria. Were there any questions on Aria's report?
Nothing for me.
And were there any board member updates unrelated to the hat that you wear as selectmen that you would like to share?
About a third of the Robin Hood Road shimmed after they put the new pavement on it last week. So we're working on that. Hopefully it'll be done Thursday.
And it looks really nice up there. So we've gotten some good feedback from folks about the paving and all of that, so.
That's a bonus. Cool.
Because we don't usually get the good feedback, so this is awesome. All right, Bronwyn, Aria, anything else you wanted to add? If not, I will jump into my town administrator update in the same theme of of Aria's message about early voting. I just wanted to say happy early voting day. And I wanted to attest that Alex, our town clerk, has been especially busy today and all month in preparation for the general election. And it's just worth noting that the last day to request an absentee ballot outside the special circumstances that you can talk to the clerk about to see if you qualify would be this Thursday. And as an advisory, the polls are open eight A M. To eight P M. On November fifth. The town office will be closed that day. I will be working remotely from Harpswell until or unless I'm called in to work at my own polls. I'm one of the backup poll workers there. I also wanted to update the board regarding the Blueberry Hill easement and that we've hit a little bit of a roadblock. And we learned this week, this week, last week, we learned last week, talking with Maine Municipal Association's legal counsel that before the town could authorize an easement onto that town land abutting Blueberry Hill Road, we would actually need to have that blast at a town meeting by the legislative body of the town, which is the voters. So I'm not saying tonight that the select board should have an answer on whether or not there is the stomach for a special town meeting. But I would say at our next select board meeting, I'd hope that we could make a decision on if we're going to move in the near future or wait until later in the season and cycle. I did speak with one of the two landowners today on the phone, and they were a little bit frustrated, understandably, but at the same time, do understand that we want to do things by the book. And I would also note that the code enforcement officer at our next meeting will be bringing a new road name to us. We're very excited. And lastly, I wanted to ask the board typically, and I say typically, last year when tax bills went out, we included an insert that was one side with a lot of useful information about hours, contact info for the town. And on the other side, we had a letter. And I wanted to see if the select board was comfortable with us doing an insert again this year. I do think with the statistical revaluation, it's very important that we get messages out to every resident explaining that while their valuation went up, what does that really mean? And while taxes are going up, why, you know, come up with some good language that I can, if the board has a blessing of it, I can work to get through the board before our next meeting. So that's ready to rock and can go from there. Kind of makes sense in my rambling question and still filibustering?
Sounds like a good idea to me. I think that hopefully that what we did last year is gotten people a little more ready for the tax bills this year. But I'm sure there'll still be some questions to stuff around. I think the explanation would be good.
And I and I think one thing that Mary and I just jumping off of that a little bit of talked about in the office. There are ninety nine families in town that did have the tax freeze last year. And so their increases this year will be more sizable because again, their taxes were frozen for a year. So that is something that as we start talking with neighbors, we just want to be mindful that for some folks, there could be a little bit of a sticker shock, though. That's where we're at.
It's also important to remind people who had that benefit that if they are eligible, there are replacement programs based on need as opposed to the generic age that that was previous in place. Yes, I think it's would be good to have an insert. And I think that the information about taxes and valuation should be as detailed as possible and as specifically as specific as possible as opposed to as specific as possible, as opposed to the more general letter that we sent last year, which was friendly and nice and everything, but maybe didn't have as much hardcore information as people need to understand what's happening. That's all.
And I, and I think you're right, Bronwyn. I think that more information is better. And the good news is it'll be John that gets to sign that wonderful letter, so gee.
Well, he doesn't have to. He could make you sign it, or he could not be signed. It could be a bullet list. It could be signed by the assessor. So be creative, John. If you don't, if you don't like what it says, figure something out.
Right, I, I think for our part, you know, we want to be as transparent about this process as possible. I know we all do. And I agree with Bronwyn, the more sort of brass tacks kind of insert we can create, and I'm happy to help with that if there's any help that you want from us. Um, but uh, thank you for thinking of that idea again.
Thank you, thank you. And if there are no questions for me on any of those items, I will turn this over to Mary for her finance director update.
Okay, um. As you know, we're getting crunch time for tax purposes. Um, so uh, we have reached out to high-grade business on this, on this warrant. You will find the, the check that we normally do early for postage. They require that, that they get the postage money ahead of time. So that is on this, this week's warrant. Um. The warrant also, there's actually two warrants this week, one which is the county tax all by itself, the one point two million dollars. Everything is all set for our, I'll be doing some, some running to some banks tomorrow. But other than that, we're all set for the tax anticipation note to be in our account on Thursday. Um, the paperwork is here for signature. Um, I do, it does require the, the full board signature. Um, and then there's a collateral agreement here with that savings, which just requires John. So pretty much um, that's what my life has been lately is tax bills and tax anticipation notes. So um, we are really kind of looking for a um, commitment date at your next meeting, I think. Um, or not your next meeting, but we've kind of got it in our minds when we're um, thinking about committing and we're hoping to mail middle to end of November. And, and start getting some tax revenue in. So um, I think that's our hope at this point. We're still reviewing documents. Van Tynan was here yesterday. He was on the phone with us a couple of times today. Um, I think really, for the most part, he's got a lot of his work done. We're just at the review stage now. We have found a few errors, which he has fixed for us. Um, and that, I think that's pretty much where we stand right now.
So are we headed where we were last year?
A little bit, yeah. Yeah, yes, we are. Yeah, I mean, yeah, by, by a couple of weeks.
Okay.
So, yeah.
Well, that's good. It's better than last year.
Exactly.
So. Yeah, so that's about all I have for you folks.
You, thank you, Mary. And now, if Chief Whalen is ready, we have the fire chief's monthly update. Brian? I'll ask to unmute and see if that helps.
Yeah, he might have gone away or something.
That is possible. What we'll do in the meantime is we'll carry on with our business while we try and make sure that, get a hold of Brian. I will shoot him a text. You'll do it perfect. And so we've tackled, okay, nope, the next item up would be our old business determination and prioritizations of energy audit pro- energy audit projects for our ARPA funds. So for a few of our meetings, I've kind of circulated pages seven, eight, and nine, and I believe in your packet of the different items that were outlined in our energy audit. At our last select board meeting, we, or rather, at the special town meeting this month, we've had so many meetings, we discussed that we would be identifying projects on this list that we would then be putting forward to our roughly ten thousand dollars in ARPA funds that are dedicated specifically here. What I would note is that if we could identify a couple of projects that the board thinks would be priorities and then rank them in order of priority, I think that cost estimates from back in February likely have shifted a little bit over the year. So we'd want to get the most bang for our buck, but if there's something that is a big priority from the board, then obviously we'd want to make sure that was the first quote we'd see. The reason we're seeking prioritizations now, then we at the office would reach out to firms, you know, connect with the folks that need to be to get quotes in, to then have the board authorize before the end of the year in December. So an important thing, does the board, in looking through those documents, have any favorites, so to speak? Though that's not the right word.
I'll be back in just a minute. I printed those pages, but I have to go get them from the printer.
Thank you, Bronwyn.
Uh, Tyler, do you want me to share my screen so the audience, the folks out in Zoom land can see what we're looking at? Or can y'all share a screen?
I can't share a screen because of the way it's set up, but I am going to make you a co-host so that you can. Thank you, Aria.
Can you see that document?
Most definitely.
Absolutely. It looks better on the screen than.
I can even read it.
Yeah, I can make it a little bit bigger.
Perfect.
Thank you, thank you. And I see, I see Molly in the audience, Bill. Or Bill and Molly, is that you?
Yes, me, yeah. So I can see the screen.
And. Oh, that was a bit of a feedback.
Then I just muted, sorry.
Perfect, thank you, Bill. And so Bronwyn, for what it's worth, we have Aria sharing her screen so that folks on Zoom can see the different pages. And I guess I would start, just as administrator, noting that on the page seven, town office and Georgetown Community School side of things, I do believe that air sealing exterior doors would be a very strong use of our funds. I think that we lose a lot of heat in that entryway here in the office. I also know that when dealing with the doors and so on, there's some other work that needs to be done in that neck of the woods as well. I do think for me, that would be the biggest priority of all of them, based on our ten thousand dollar rough budget. Recognizing that my dream is to get an air pump here at the, the town office someday, but that's not going to be with these funds today in front of us.
Tyler, I share that uh, that was my number one, was the exterior door at two thousand. I feel like we're playing a game show. I'll take exterior doors for two thousand, please.
Um, or more, because I think we all thought it would actually cost more than that. But it would be good, that is a high priority item. And it fits in with the other work that we hope to do in the conference room and kind of finish that space.
Yes.
Well, the door, the door was on my, right up on top and that, and that friggin' light out on the uh.
The exterior.
Exterior light, yes.
John, that was my number two.
Same with me.
The halide, halide or halide, whatever it is, that light?
Yes, correct.
So now we're up to fifty-two fifty, right?
I just think the doors are gonna cost more. I mean, I don't know what they were. I think, are we thinking of replacing these doors or simply new weather stripping on the doors?
Old units, I would assume.
I, I think that there could.
Two grand, not gonna get.
Yeah, no, I mean, that's.
I think if we were looking for new units, that price would go up, but still would meet the mustard of what we blessed at town meeting. I do think that the way this is written, though, it clearly is a lower quote.
Yeah.
I would say that on page eight, community center, there are a lot of great projects and there are a lot of things that would be good bang for the buck. However, with the community center being its own quasi-independent, really, it's not quasi, it is independent of the town. I don't think, even though there's a lot of good here, this is the best use of ARPA funds. And Susan and Terry are noting that new doors will be considerably more expensive, and thank you. And I would say that on the fire department station in Annex, I do think that exterior lighting is something that was a high priority from them at a low cost. I also know that the refrigerator replacement is something that if we were looking at the right time of year and we are in the season to start buying things, that's something where there could be savings. But I would not put that at the top of my priority list. So you kind of heard my thoughts, but I want to hear more from you folks to make sure we're soliciting the best quotes for the town for later select board approval.
Well, what I hear is that the um, replacing our ceiling, the exterior doors in the anteroom to the town office is, would be the top priority with the lighting replacement, exterior halide light coming in second. And possibly lighting replacement, exterior lighting at the fire station is number three?
That were, I mean, that, that makes the most, most sense of what we looked at, so yeah.
And, and even though that technically, if you add all them up right now, is going to come in less, I'm very confident with just discussing here that these quotes will come in more. So if the board's comfortable, we can start looking for options, so we can make some decisions in the near term. But I know Aria didn't have a chance to really express if she had any other priorities as well. I don't want to leave anyone out.
No, mine were the doors and the lighting, so we're, we're all in, on the same page about this. And uh, I think we stop there because certainly we can add twenty percent to the cost that we've got estimated here.
All right. Thank you for those determinations and prioritizations, and we will come back soon. And I'm not.
I don't know whether, where it belongs, but you and I have previously talked about it. The time that we deal with the exterior doors, I would very much like to see the handicap buttons um, be made effective, useful, operating. And so that might become part of the door situation when you're, when we're dealing with them. I don't know where it, you know, I don't really know where it fits, but it should happen.
Absolutely. We want to make sure that we're accessible and you and I have talked about it, Bronwyn, but I can tell you, if, when we have residents come in and express it too, it's something that we definitely want to make sure gets done. And I think talking with the door folks, if it can't fit as part of this, I'm sure they can point us in the right direction to get that done as well.
For replacing the door, I would almost think we'd be required, well, we'd be required, we're just for the accessibility.
Right.
I mean, that's, if, if we upgrade it, we need, probably need to upgrade it to that anyway.
Yeah.
So that may just.
It's a good point.
Thing we get.
Yes.
We are public accommodation, so, sorry.
All right. So I think, is Brian with us yet?
No, Brian is on a call.
Okay, so we may have to push.
Hold on, sorry.
Well, I will jump now to our item of new business, which is setting the November and December meeting schedule. So normally I like to stick as close to our second and fourth Tuesdays as we can here in the office. But I did want to note that coming in November, our regularly scheduled select board meetings would be the twelfth and the twenty-sixth. And I would note that those dates do work for me here at the office. But if we did want to have some town staff at the twenty-sixth, that week does not work for them. I would also say that if we were to condense to one select board meeting, given all of the holidays, my preference would be for the week or the night of the nineteenth, because that would give us enough time to finish up the work and we could set a mill rate that night and have tax bills mailed later that week ideally. But again, that's just where we're at kind of now thinking, but we want to make sure we and December is going to be the month where I, while we're talking about it, we should probably think in tandem. Our select board meetings are currently scheduled for the tenth and the twenty-fourth. I personally will not be available on Christmas Eve, as much as I love you all. And I would say that if we moved our select board meeting in November to the nineteenth, we could potentially do a select board meeting on the third in December and again on the seventeenth, though the third does have some conflict with the recreation committee, but we can figure something out. So now you've got all the info I have.
So Tyler, for November, you're saying the nineteenth? And what, the twelfth, you said, please, for November?
I'm thinking November, if we did just the nineteenth, likely having a special meeting called for the purpose of signing some leases and subleases. And I like the idea, truthfully, that if we pushed our regular work to the nineteenth, it gives us time to finish up with commitment and then also some flexibility on the intervening week, so we can all get together to hopefully sign some things.
That works for me, the nineteenth does.
And I'd, I'd like to pursue the idea that we do November nineteenth, December third, December seventeenth, we skip Christmas Eve and New Year's Eve and meet again in January.
Is that a motion?
I'd be happy to make it a motion, and if people don't like it, they can vote it down or they can amend the motion.
I'll second it. I would just, I want to, if we can just repeat the dates, I'm trying to get them and look at my calendars. We're talking about this, please. So December.
The nineteenth of November, the third of December, and the seventeenth of December.
And given the recreation committee meeting at six P M. on the third in December, would we want to push that to a later meeting? Like seven o'clock, that way we don't have to bump their night ahead of some very big holiday festivities they'll be planning?
I would like that. And, and there's also on the seventeenth in December, there's a school board meeting at, I've got that down for five P M. Just an F I.
Is that a Tuesday?
Yeah, that doesn't make sense, does it? It should be a Wednesday, so don't listen to me. I like the seventeenth.
So, so Bronwyn, would you be comfortable with six P M. on the nineteenth, seven P M. on the third, and back to six P M. on the seventeenth?
That's fine.
Perfect. All in favor? All, all in favor?
Oops.
Rita, oh, very good.
I'm in favor.
And Brian should be back in, probably that Georgetown Fire Department one.
Yeah, I let him in there, mate. Uh, Tyler, could you just do a follow-up email to the three of us, please? Uh, just nailing down those dates?
Those dates and times, got it, because it's, that time of year, we're all going to be a little bit squirrely, so yes.
Right. Thank you so much.
All right, and I believe Brian is now back in, so if Chief Whalen would like to hop on the Zoom, we can have a fire department update.
All right, guys, can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, I apologize for uh, being a little late here. Um, I haven't worked tonight and had to run out on a call. So uh, we just wrapped up and I'm uh, unfortunately standing outside of the E R. right now, so it might be a little bit loud, but um, we'll get, I can give you what I've got offhand at least. Um, I had some notes prepared, but uh, unfortunately, that's back to station, so. Uh, so just a update on what we've been doing right now with the fire department. Um, the continuing with engine three is still out of service. Uh, still up at police services, like was in contact with them last week. Um, and they should have had their new radiator installed, their repair radiator installed, so um, they still haven't tested the transmission to find out if that has sustained any damage, because they can't even test that until the new radiator goes in. So um, still waiting here on that right now. Um, it could be another week or three, maybe. I really don't know. Um, they don't know, so they're uh, waiting to hear on that. And um, let's see, so that's engine three. We have our new Lucas CPR device, the Canada CPR device is now in service. It's on the ambulance right now, and uh, if we have the enforcement situation with cardiac arrest in town, we can uh, a wonderful tool to use. Um, so I really hope we never have to use it, but uh, if we do, it's ready to go. Uh, we've got a couple of trainings on it. In fact, we just did another uh, hour training on it last night at our EMS training. So that's now ready to go, and everyone's getting trained up and familiar with it right now, so. So that's now ready to go, and everyone's getting trained up and familiar with it right now, so. Got that going on right there. We've done about see, we're up to 150 calls for the year in Georgetown so far, which is on track for maybe not the busiest year ever, but might get close to tying our calls for the busiest year. So we're, we're up there for calls for the year, but we're, we're holding our own. We've had a variety of calls in the last couple of weeks since I saw you guys last on this venue, and they've had a bit of variety. We've only had, I think, two EMS calls. Actually, no, sorry, three EMS calls. One of them, unfortunately, to, unfortunately, that we had, actually no Georgetown responders, we found one of those EMS calls, and that's had to be called to take the patient to the hospital. And so we have a couple EMS calls, handful of fire calls, including a bunch of wires down, three down calls. We had three of those that all happened at the exact same time on our beautiful windy Saturday we had about a week ago. As you guys may have remembered, 127 was shut down for about six hours while we waited for CMP to come down and make everything safe and straighten it out for us, so. We had a couple others, we had a possible boulder in distress call, which turned out to be nothing. Couple of smoke investigation calls, which thankfully all turned out to be unfounded. And just one fire alarm call, so. That's kind of how we do it the last month or so for call-wise. Turnout from responders has been, I would say, adequate. We haven't had a, a lot of people turn out, but we've had enough to get the job done. Some of these calls for like possible smoke investigations, only had two or three people responding. We did get eight people on Saturday when we had to shut the road down, which is a great turnout, because we need everybody for that. Took a lot of, a lot of manpower, so. Let's see, what else we got? So kind of going back to the but the incident we had where the EMS call wasn't, always an answer, unfortunately, and I kind of just wanted to report that, but we had our very first EMS call in Georgetown where we had no Georgetown responders. So to kind of help mitigate that possible circumstance in the future, I have reached out to the fire chief in Bath and had preliminary discussion with him about having Bath ambulance come down to Georgetown in the very rare occasion that we cannot get any responders out to a call. So they're, they're looking into things on their end, and they're gonna come back to us with a proposal that may incur some costs to the town or the department here, but that's still to be seen what the exact details will look like. I kind of mentioned that earlier this week when I spoke with, you know, Bronwyn and Aria, just in general, the fire department there, so. We have those things going on right now, and let's see here. But yeah, we've had a decent turnout. We're, we did lose one member recently, last couple of weeks, who had to step off the department due to a multitude of other commitments, family things, things like that, so. With them well, and left very good standing, so. But we're down to about 20, 23 responders right now out of the total roster, so. It's a pretty good sized roster for the town we have and the call volume, but you know, we can always use more, more hands make light work, so. That's what I'm got for the most part. Does anyone have any questions or want me to follow? I can elaborate on anything I mentioned here before, or if there are any questions about really anything, so.
You, I don't have any questions from what you've told me or told us so far. Do either of you guys have any questions?
Well, I spoke with Brian yesterday and at some length, and he has a lot of concerns about the future. I think he has a tendency to put the best face on current situations. But in, in truth, we have a lot of people on the roster who aren't able to respond all the time. And it's been more than once recently that there has been only one person responding. Happens sometimes that that person is highly qualified, which is helpful, but it doesn't put two people on the ambulance or make everyone confident that the next call will be covered. So I really appreciate it, just the fact that Brian is calling in from a, in front of the ER from his regular job as a full, full-time firefighter, is another indication of how difficult it is to coordinate staffing in a situation like this. And we talked about the need for targeted recruitment as people grow older, retire, move away, who have been the backbone of a fire department for many years, and how are we going to find replacements for them? It's more than just putting out an email or a bulletin or a statement, because it is a big commitment, and we need, I think we need to recognize more fully as a community, the people that are already making that commitment. About whether there's a fire department appreciation event, or perhaps a program at the Historical Society about the past and the future of volunteer fire companies across the state, because it is a, a problem everywhere, and we do see evidence of that in legislative concern about EMS services that are shutting down. Brian mentioned the town of Bodenham, where they had, they were contracted, contracted with Northeast Ambulance Service, and suddenly one day Northeast Ambulance Service said, oh, hey, we're done next month. And so they had like a $450,000 bill and that, and a void that they needed to fill with that, with ambulance coverage. Other towns, like a Rousick and Woolwich, contract with Bath already to provide ambulance service. I just think we're not aware of all the issues that are pressuring our fire department, and I know Brian wants us to think about future solutions. As I said to him the other day, you're just telling me the gloom, doom, gloom part. What is it we need to do? What is a possible solution? I'm not sure anybody has a real solution yet, but let's at least maximize the community that we've got. Make sure that we have as many people thinking about training for the fire department, and once they're trained, giving time to it that, as we possibly can, and then explore what the next stage of, of issues may be in five or 10 years. That's just, I just don't want to supersede Brian's report, but I think he was being very, more positive than he often feels about some of these issues. He put a real positive spin. We're making it. We're, we're, you know, our people are stepping up. And I know that they are. Some of my neighbors are. But I also know that some of the stalwarts of the department are unnoticed that they're gonna retire. So it's something to be concerned about. That's all.
And I believe Aria had her hand up as well.
Yes, you know, I would, I, I just, Bronwyn hit on a couple of the points that it sounds like we had similar conversations with Brian yesterday, with Chief Whalen yesterday, but a couple of things. I think it's important to have, and I would envision as you know, having a gratitude, a gratitude and recruitment effort at a place like, hopefully the GHS or some, some larger place, maybe the Community Center that could hold people, and Brian and the rest of the fire department team can talk to us about some of the constraints on our volunteer efforts. It's great that we have a roster of 23. Some of those people are also working, and so that cuts into the ability for them to respond and all the other reasons that we know we may have a limited response. And so I would love to have Brian do a presentation to the community about the kinds of needs that they have. And I know that Brian, you are looking at a couple of different solutions, including potentially us banding together with other towns. And so there's a lot of information that we need to consider as a community. It's likely to increase our costs. There's no way around that. And we want to be ahead of this and be proactive, rather than have it happen to us like what happened in Bowdoin and have the sticker shock that that community faced. We're lucky we've been able to go this long with the Community Fire Department on a volunteer basis that we have, and it is a huge kudos to all of those who have served for so many years. I, we, it's just amazing what we have in, in that fire department, and we've got to find some workable options as we move into the next generation of needs. Thanks.
Thank you, Aria. Were there any other comments from the board? Seeing none, I believe, just to look back real quick, so we've jumped around a bit. The three updates are done. We've made our determinations. We've set a schedule. We've tackled the TOPMB. There are some items that'll be available for signature, including the warrant and some tax anticipation note documents. I would turn this back over to you, John, for public comment before we go into an executive session.
Is there any public comment? Yes.
Uh, thank you, select board. I, I just hope that in response to my letter, that the select board will at least schedule a discussion that would invite public comment. And, you know, we'll see if anything comes to that, but I would appreciate that.
Okay. Cool.
Yep.
Thank you.
Thanks.
And just, just as a note, Bill, we do have public comment at the beginning and end of every, but I think you're talking specifically to the points you raised, correct?
Yes.
Okay. But definitely make sure everyone knows, beginning and end, they can always get their word in, so, thank you.
And Tyler, I'm sorry to interrupt. If, if people are wondering about the letter, it's available at the Town Office, correct? A copy would be available of Bill's letter at the Town Office.
We definitely could make that available, yes.
Thank you.
All right. A motion to go into executive session.
So moved.
We have to unfortunately do the citation for the reason.
Thanks, Bill.
So pursuant to MRS Section 405, Section 6, Section C, executive session pursuant to actu, actu
Acquisition.
Actu is acquisition of real property or economic development.
Second?
Second, okay.
In favor?
Favor.
And three and zero, so we will get folks out. I'm gonna pause our recording.
Okay, and now that we're back here, from our discussion in executive session, I move we execute a lease agreement with Reed Birdsville and a sublease agreement with Saginaw County for the location of a telecommunications tower, as recently authorized by town meeting, with the documents to be in substantially the form of the current drafts before the board, subject to finalization by the town attorney.
Second.
All in favor?
You bet.
I.
Zero. That is exciting.
Motion. Yes.
I'm just saying that's exciting.
Yes. That's great. You should, we should do a little flyer and put that on the Facebook. We finally gonna get the tower. Maybe we wait till the signing.
I think we wait till the signing, yes.
Of course, yeah, I jumped the gun there, sorry. All right, well, I move to adjourn. Oh, sorry. What'd you say, Mary? I'm sorry.
I'd be more inclined to wait until they break ground.
For sure, for sure. Let's hope they break it before it actually gets hard ground.
Right, exactly.
So with that being said, are we all set?
Yeah, I move to adjourn, yeah.
Awesome.
Okay, and I'm gonna need, like I said, the warrants are here, and then I'm gonna need signatures on these tan documents. Okay, so if you can't make it in, let me know and I'll get them to you. Okay?
Mary, is, do you need it done tomorrow? Can I pop over Thursday on my way back from Portland?
Thursday, actually, I would rather have, this is all paperwork for Thursday morning, so I would say
Okay, tomorrow. And y'all are there till 5, okay?
Yep. Yep, yep.
And Aria, will you be touching base with Kristen to let her know about the motion, or would you like me to do that in the morning?
Either one. Yeah, I, I can do that and let her know. We've, Tyler, why don't you do that? Why don't you do that?
Okay.
Okay, yeah, how about that? I've got, I've got some meetings in the morning that, you know, might then take me off of this track, and I don't want to drop that ball, if you don't mind notifying her.
I'll put a tickler in my phone, and I'll send the update to everyone in the morning as well about meeting times that we've rescheduled, so.
Yeah, that can wait too. You know, I know. I just, I, I want to get those on the calendar because they are somewhat unusual, and we've changed some of the times too.
Yep.
So there was a motion to adjourn, and everyone voted?
Yes. We was. Yes. All right.
Good luck, everybody.
All right, take care, y'all. Bye-bye.